Shortly after 7 o'clock, so we'll open this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission. Our first item of business is citizen comments. So if there's someone out there who would care to share a comment, now is your opportunity.
And I do see one raised hand. Thank you. I will unmute you. I will promote you to a panelist and then you will have three minutes for your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes, and if you could provide your name and your full name and address and an email address, that would be wonderful.
Okay, I'm Stacy Valenzuela. I live here in Kenmore. And what did you need? My full email?
Yes, your email and your address.
Address is 7031 Northeast 175th Street. And my email is sva lenz 229 at gmail dot com.
Okay.
And I'm calling in regards to the affordable housing. Per RCW 3678 540 Affordable Housing Incentive Programs. The state had asked for affordable housing to be at the 30% of the median income. And only cities that show that they have a higher need in the 70 to 80% should have affordable housing labeled in those percentages. And I would like to see the statistics that show that here in Kenmore, there is a higher need for housing that is affordable to be in the 70 to 80 percentile. I see when I am around here every day that more of the need is for the people in the 30%. And it is for the disabled, the fixed income, the workers at Safeway, the coffee shops, the grocery store, the other grocery store. All of these people need housing available. Some of our students and our workers are living 3 and 4 to a one bedroom because they cannot find affordable housing. And I just wish that you would really take this seriously, that we, our needs are for people in the lower income brackets. And I know also that some of the people had run their campaigns saying that they would help with affordable housing. And I think this is the time to do the right thing and hold developers to having more affordable housing units in any development at the lower fixed income rate. It would be, really be helpful to make a better Kenmore and a well-rounded Kenmore. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments, Stacy. We are actually going to address, I believe, certainly affordable housing and possibly that very question later tonight. So you're certainly welcome to stay on and watch our, watch our meeting. So our next item of business is-
Let me just see, there's one other-
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
And I just want to give this person an opportunity. I don't see their name, but if they can use the raised hand feature if they want to speak. So I'll give them a moment to see if they raise their hand. And I do not see a raised hand, so I think they will not be commenting.
Okay. Thanks, Laura. So our next item of business is approval of minutes from the August 18, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. So I'm open to a motion for approval of those minutes.
I still move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the August 18 meeting. Any discussion on the motion?
The question I have is the text in the item three says it will be ready for approval at the October 6 meeting.
That is correct. I do not believe minutes were provided in this agenda.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I misread that and I misunderstood that. So we will not vote. We will just move on to the next item. So my apologies.
Sorry for the confusion. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, our next item is bringing the staff in on affordable housing. So Lori, take it away.
Shall I go ahead?
It's all, it's all yours, Lori. Sure, go ahead.
Take it away, Lori. I just want to kind of, maybe in response to citizen comment is, Stacy's probably aware that the council did adopt an affordable housing strategy a few years ago. And since that time, the city has taken on several projects to, related to affordable housing, like the manufactured housing project, for example, multifamily tax exemption. The project that the commissioner currently working on is to come up with a process that might help affordable housing projects get through the process to be able faster to construction, I guess. So this is really, this current project is really more about process. And so tonight, we're continuing that discussion based on some scenarios that we're bringing forward for discussion. And Lori will go through those. And then there are some additional questions actually related to the type of affordable project that these scenarios would apply to. So by way of introduction, I'll now turn it over to Lori. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. So as Debbie said, tonight, we're going to be talking about an initial framework for how this special affordable housing review process might work. And in your materials, I outlined three different processes, potential processes. Two of them dealt with timing exclusively, shortened timeline for permit processing. And then the third one addressed modifications to development standards. So as was mentioned in the staff memo, I made some assumptions following your discussion about sort of underlying principles or concerns that you had. And so I want to be sure that I got those correctly. But my understanding was that the scenario should not rely on new staffing, that an affordable housing project may not always be the highest priority. For example, if it was in competition with a public project for schools or parks or something like that. And finally, that local appeals, particularly in the single-family zones, are an important community benefit. So those were my takeaways. And if I've missed something, I hope that you will let me know. But otherwise, I was thinking I would just run through the scenarios. I then have some slides that, that more clearly outline these scenarios that we could show as you begin your discussion. And then after that part of the presentation and discussion, there is a series of follow-up questions. If you're ready to tackle those follow-up questions, and as Debbie said, those really relate to the types of projects that would be allowed to go through this kind of a process. So unless they're initial questions, I'm just going to quickly outline the three options. And then we can put up the slides and you can have some discussion and give me some feedback. And okay. So two of the processes that are in front of you tonight, as I mentioned, have to do with shortened timelines. The first one is actually reducing the review process. As you remember, last time, we talked about how different kinds of permits go through different kinds of processes and they have different appeal standards and, et cetera. So this idea would be to review, reduce the review time for affordable housing projects in multifamily and commercial areas. So we have sometimes mixed-use, commercial and multifamily projects. And we have multifamily zoned areas. So in those areas, rather than go through the regular process, those projects would be moved to what's called a type 1 permit. It's basically the equivalent of a building permit. And I'll, and there are no appeal provisions. And there's no public notice provision. So it really does streamline the process quite a bit. But this proposal would not allow for a waiver of development standards. So in other words, if a project were coming through, they couldn't ask to change their height or their density or anything like that. It would strictly be based on the zoning. The second recommended shortened timeframe scenario would be to, we discussed this last time, it would be to allow a developer of an affordable housing project to propose a timeline to the city based on their process and based on their key dates. The city then would have the option to determine whether they could prioritize the project and meet those key dates. Or if they could not, if the city did not have the staffing in place or the workload availability, then the proponent would be given an opportunity to move ahead, but they would be responsible for paying for the, the time for a consultant to take over the review. Again, you'd be weighing, the proponent would of course be weighing whether the cost to speed up the permit review is worth it overall in terms of the, the process of the project itself. The third scenario is one that really doesn't address timing at all. It addresses development standards. So this one is a way for a proponent of an affordable housing project. And we're putting, recommending very strict guidelines around that. So it would have to be a 100% affordable housing project. And there would have to be public funds involved. And if it met those criteria, then the project could go through a development agreement process. They could do that anyway, right now, in most of the commercial zones, but not in the single-family zones. So this would be a change to allow this type of a project in a residential, it's also in multifamily, to go through this type of a process in a residential zone. And then the idea is that we would cut out some of the extra more burdensome provisions from the development agreement process. So for example, you wouldn't have to have two public hearings. You could have one public hearing. The city council wouldn't have to make a threshold decision, which means going to a meeting and asking, asking the council if they want to consider the project. Because presumably, because it would be a 100% affordable housing project, the council would be very interested in it. We'd also reduce payment requirements for attorney fees and public notice expenses. So when you do a development agreement and the chapter was included as attachment one to your materials, then as in, as part of the granting of development standard waivers, the applicant has to provide a public benefit. The idea here is that for an affordable housing project, the affordable housing itself would be the primary public benefit. Now, as always, it would depend on what the proposal was. If it was an affordable housing project and that was a significant benefit, but then they were asking for a major waiver of another standard, for example, that might not be enough. Or it might be that your level of affordability needs to be lower than it would be otherwise, or something like that. There are certain standards in a development agreement that can't be waived. You can't waive surface water standards. You can't waive critical area standards. You can't waive building code standards. So it's not a free-for-all. And so those were the ideas we came up with. And of course, with each of these process ideas, there would be a companion discussion of, well, what types of projects should be eligible for each of these options? So with that, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I will pull up the slides and, and it just will give you a sort of a focus as you begin your discussion about these recommendations and see how you feel about them.
Anybody have any questions? I maybe had one question, Lori, and-
Sure.
Apologies if this came up already. Is this, are these scenarios, you know, either or? Are we supposed to come up with one scenario or multiple scenarios? Or is there any-
It doesn't have to be either or. There's no, the city council didn't give any direction, you know, that you can only have one or, or even what type of project. The only direction they mentioned was that they hoped that housing for the disabled would be considered. But anyway, so you could pick one, you could pick all three. You could say, I don't like any of them and we could try again. So anyway, so I'm going to share my screen and it'll show-
One just question, maybe you, I don't expect to answer now, but as we go through it, I'd like to understand specifically under any of these scenarios, what the opportunity for public input would be.
Okay, sure.
You know, I'm sure it varies from none to something specific. So just, if you could help us understand what those are as we go through that.
Yeah, okay. So here, I am going to share. So this is the first option. This is the one I am calling reduced review process. And again, we're recommending this based on the discussions that I heard over the last few meetings, only in the multifamily and commercial zones. So it would, again, reduce the review process to a lesser process. So the multifamily projects in a multifamily or commercial zone become type 1 permits without public notice or an administrative appeal. It's basically the same process that a building permit goes through. And this, as I mentioned, this process would not apply if a waiver of development standards was requested. So any reactions or questions?
I, I'm a little uncomfortable with any scenario that totally eliminates public input. I'd like to maybe come back to that at some point and understand how that could happen. I think part of that also may be related to the size of the project. You know, if we're talking about a small residential lot versus a major project, that might be something we, we might want to have a different look at that. I'll say otherwise, I like the, I like this approach. I think the idea of providing an expedited way to be able to provide affordable housing in the area of multifamily, the commercial zone, we've already created specifically because we wanted to have greater density there. And we wanted through our plan to direct that density there. I think that supports that. I just want to make sure we don't give up, we're very sure about what we're doing if we give up any opportunity for public input.
Yeah, I share Mike's concern on that point about public input. And I was kind of curious about, he mentioned that if a variance is needed, the review process would follow regular protocols. Presumably, that includes some public notice or hearings, Lori? If a variance is needed, okay.
There are a number of different kinds of processes that, that a project could go through that fall into those higher level type 2, type 3, type kinds of categories. And those do require public notice. So the idea was if, for example, a variance was requested, it would go back to its type 2 regular process, that it would not be bumped down.
Okay. Do you have any sense for how often, you know, these variances, you know, might be, might be sought for these kinds of projects?
I don't. I can say that there are often times when larger projects need to vary some type of a standard. I think if, if someone really wanted to vary standards, that probably going to the development review process is the most effective way to do it. I would not recommend, if someone wanted to vary standards, that we just blanket reduce a process-
Certainly, yeah.
There was no public input.
No, I like that sort of backstop there, just trying to get a sense of how frequently that might apply and, you know, in this, in this scenario.
Yeah, I, you know, we could look at some of the projects on that list. As you saw, attachment four included projects that had been approved. I think a couple of them may have requested waiver, waivers of development standards. Some of them were before my time and I don't really know whether they did. But Spencer 68, for example, I think had some, they went through the development agreement process and some standards were waived. Solmax, I, I am not sure whether that one has any waivers. Kenmore Urban, which is, I think, another one on the list, may have some waivers.
Thank you.
So Lori, do you want us to answer the three questions at this time when we're talking about the specific process or scenario? Or do you want to wait until the end?
You know, it doesn't matter if it's easier. For example, Commissioner Vanderland already started answering those three questions to some degree, suggesting that perhaps size of project was, could be a variable on whether this was an appropriate process. If you're comfortable looking at those three questions with the context, in the context of this reduced review process, if there's a general idea that this is something you're interested in, then I would like to have those three questions answered as I think about code amendments. So if, if the group is thinking that there, that this might be something to be considered, I could turn right away to those questions.
Yeah, any preference among, among our group?
I like that approach. I think that's efficient.
Oh, so do I. Yes, I agree.
Okay, all right. So if we were to assume that this reduced review process is something that we could write amendments for, look at this. Here are the questions. First question, should the shortened timeframe apply to moderate income housing or only to low and very low income housing? And attachment three to your materials gave you a sense of what the average median income is. The definition of low and very low and moderate income housing, it differs whether, depending on whether it's ownership or rental housing. But that information was also in attachment three.
Right. I guess from my perspective and just listening to comments by Stacy, I'm inclined to support the low and very low. On the one hand, I think any affordable housing is, is something we should strive for. At the same time, it seems as though there's a specific need for the low and very low. And I'm, I'm wondering if by giving this reduced timeframe, that would encourage more of that type of building.
Any, is any other-
Does want to weigh in on, on that? I, I would agree with Suzanne. So is the question, as you phrased it, Lori, is, is whether to, whether to add moderate income housing to, to the low and very low income housing criteria? Is that-
Right, correct. Sometimes, for example, the multifamily tax exemption and the transit-oriented development, moderate income housing is still less than median income. But it's, it's at a higher level than low and very low income housing. And certainly, our need is more for the low and very low income housing.
Lori, just to clarify, again, I believe, based on where we're at as the city, or from the city's standpoint, we have not met our goals for any of the three different types of low-income housing. Is that correct?
That's correct, but we're closer with the moderate income. In fact, moderate income, we've had folks tell us that moderate income is almost market rate in, in Kenmore, just because the market is different. And this is a King County median that everyone uses.
That's an interesting point, Lori, because I know, even though we're not talking about subsidy here or economic incentives, the idea of providing additional incentives for providing what is equivalent to a market rate doesn't really seem to me worth much or something we should support. And to the extent that we're talking about expediting the review process here versus economic incentives, I think providing an expedited process for the lower income makes sense. I keep in the back of my mind everything we've already know about how there hasn't been much uptake in the incentives that are there already. So I think economics are to drive this, but at least from a policy standpoint, we could, we could provide this as an option. It might, it might be, or at least consistent with our, with our talk.
Lori, is there, is there any, you know, risk that if we, if we included moderate income housing, that that might have any, you know, negative impact on development of the low and very low income housing at all?
Well, I don't know that it would have a negative impact. It's certainly, if, if you're trying to incentivize a certain level of income housing, the more opportunities you give to that type of housing, hopefully, the more opportunities will be taken. If, for example, you extended the opportunity to moderate income housing, it's possible that someone that was thinking of maybe doing a, a lower income housing would say, well, you know, I can get the same process if I go with moderate income and, and I won't have quite the issues that I might have trying to fund a low or very low income housing project.
Other people have any thoughts on this particular question for this scenario?
Maybe I should jump in and tell you what my next steps would be for this. This might help clarify a little bit. So as you identify to me which processes you're comfortable with and some general guidance on these questions, then I would begin to draft code amendments. There are still going to be outstanding questions. For example, the, the size, size of project question, percentage of affordable units. If you remember from our very first meeting, there was actually quite a list of, of things that needed to be decided. But I'm, I think what I'm trying to do is to set out a framework and then we'll just fill it in as you give me direction on different concepts.
Do you feel, I mean, anybody else might get one? When do you feel you have enough for this particular question at this, at this time?
If, unless someone else wants to comment on it.
This is Dennis. I do have one question. Is it feasible on question one to say that no more than 50% of the housing can be for moderate income? And the other 50% has to be for the low and very low?
Right, sure. That would be a way to handle it. I, and again, as, as we sketch these out, there'll be different approaches. I would hesitate, I think my only hesitation would be not to develop so many options that it really complicates the situation. So that if, you know, if you take one approach in one type of a process, so in this process, it's 50/50 is fine. And the next one is 25/75. And then there's a subset that's 30 and 70. We just don't want to overly complicate it, would be my advice. That's just because we try to keep, to streamline the zoning code where we can. But certainly, that would be an approach that could be considered. And it just would be whether the commission, and I haven't asked that question now, but if the commission has initial guidance there. I think it makes-
Go ahead, Carol.
Sorry. I think for the sake of creating a framework, it might be good to build the generalizations first and then review the- and then review them and go back and potentially make clauses that help to describe that framework, what our goal is. And I think just looking at that one table that talks about what the current scenarios are, or what we built in 2019, it's really obvious that we are trying to keep pace with market value, but we're not really keeping pace with what would qualify as very low income. And since we had public comment kind of voicing that, maybe that's something that we could build into the framework without putting a percentage on it. Just saying, we want to expedite this process and streamline it. And the benefit we hope to gain out of it is to build out housing for very low income. And I do realize that it is complicated because it depends on the size of the property, the size of the project, how much can you build on that particular parcel? And it all comes down to, are we building mixed-use types of affordable housing? Or are we creating a housing project that is exclusive to low income? And I think in our last discussion, we kind of wanted to stay away from that so that there wasn't the stigma, rather that there would be stratified living and not, that is much more welcoming across the board than having a exclusive to the very low income total project is all about that. Really, we've moved away from that over the last 30 years, and I wouldn't want to go back to that scenario. So that would be my only caution about putting a percentage in there. I think it's better to write what the motivation for a particular expedited process would be.
So I like the idea of writing a sort of a purpose statement. That often appears in the zoning code. I want to go back to your comment about not wanting a standalone low or very low income housing project. I did not, I do not recall that. I did not write that down. And that's an important question. And I'm hoping that the commission can weigh in on that. If I need to add that to my list, do commissioners agree that having a low or a very low income housing project standalone is not desirable? There are, I will say that there are a number of nonprofit housing developers that only build that type of a project.
So I guess I would be interested to know if there's some kind of a stigma related to that currently. I see on one of the handouts, there's Heron Landing and Northlake Grove. And it looks like those are completely affordable, all the units there. So has there been a concern with those projects? With the, by the people living there or the neighborhood or anything like that?
I was not here when that project was approved, but I have not heard of any concerns. That's the Heron Landing. And it's neighbor Heron Run are the big projects on Northeast 181st Street across from the Safeway. Just so you know what projects we're talking about.
I remember those projects. And I don't remember the being any, sorry about that, outcry or a lot of public comment when those two projects were approved. And that's going back almost 20 years now.
Well, Lori, if you're asking the question, I mean, I'll speak for myself. I think we want to encourage, you know, as many different types of affordable housing as we can. And I certainly would be personally fine having, you know, if there are developers who want to do low and very low income housing on its own, I would support that as, keeping that as an option.
Do any other commissioners want to weigh in on that?
I think I'd like to just, you know, put my opinion out there about this. And I don't feel that we should exclude it to one type or another. I don't think we should exclude it to just being standalone affordable housing. And I don't think we should exclude it to just be mixed use or other types of projects that only a partial element is affordable housing. Because there's pros and cons to, I guess, both of those, at least from what I've heard. You know, we've talked about how there can be a stigma based on some of the appeals and stuff. It may not be very great, but I mean, that has come up in our conversation before. And I feel if we at least allow the option for some of these other types of projects that are, you know, maybe mixed use or incorporate elements of affordable housing along with other things, it could be better received by some members of the public. But I also, you know, feel that it's very important to not exclude just complete affordable housing units because that, of course, would be one of the fastest ways for us as a city to achieve our goals. So right now, you know, I just, my opinion is that we shouldn't limit either because there's, there can be certain benefits to each one, either in the eyes of the public or in the eyes of the city, on trying to achieve our goals, if that makes sense.
So.
My thought.
Go ahead.
My thought at this point is, given the zoning areas we're talking about, which are largely composed of larger potential development sites, which means I think you have a greater probability of having an economically sustainable development there that would include both low income and market rate. So I like the idea, again, of be talking about these specific areas. That said, I think providing this expedited process for the low income and very low income makes a lot of sense. And not necessarily for the moderate income, which may not really need this sort of help. As to the question of, do we allow or disallow 100% affordable housing development? I'm comfortable with saying no to that. But I'd like to understand, that can be very sensitive depending upon the area which is, yeah. If we're talking strictly about this particular zoning area, I think there's less of a concern. But I want to be sure that we have some opportunity for community input on that, which could include not just residents of the neighborhood, but also businesses in the neighborhood as well.
Okay, so I could move on to this second question. Should, and this is related to this, but should all housing procedures for those with disabilities, regardless of income, be included in these processes? And the reason this comes up is, for example, in some affordable housing programs, seniors are automatically included as being being considered lower income, just because they're on a fixed income. So in some cases, senior housing is given special treatment. And the same probably could hold for those with disabilities. So any reaction to that question?
Where I struggle on this one is if we provided expedited process for low income or very low income, what is the distinction of age or disability? What difference does that, what advantage does that add?
It doesn't, well, it just broadens the category of who could apply. And I'm partly thinking of the private request. I think I mentioned in our very first meeting on the topic that we had received a request from a developer who wanted to do a senior housing project. It was exclusively for seniors. And some were for, some of the units were specifically for low-income seniors. But the question was whether that type of a project, even though there were no income standards, should be included in the opportunity to have a faster timeframe? Whether senior housing or housing for those with disabilities should be equally considered as well as income?
I think that you answered my question. To the extent that there isn't any assurance that we're providing income or housing for low income, I'm not sure why we would create an expedited process which could potentially be market rate or higher housing. I think the criteria here ought to be income, not necessarily whether or not disabled or aged. I'm sympathetic to that certainly, but I think really our objective here is to look at affordable housing.
Okay, yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I do too with one caveat. I do think, I think the council had, I think you mentioned Lori, had sort of called out an interest in having housing for people with disabilities to be included in this this project in terms of what they wanted to see as a recommendation. Can you clarify that?
Right. I think they just wanted to raise the consideration. When we, when we were discussing it with the city council, we mentioned the senior housing project, just because that was the private request. And then one of the council members said, well, if you were going to consider something special for seniors, you should also consider something special for those with disabilities. But they were not asked specifically about the income relationship. So, you know, low-income seniors or low-income folks with disabilities would be covered by this process, right? It's just that what I am hearing a couple of you say is that not all projects for those who are disabled or those who are seniors should be covered by this process.
Yes, I agree with what Mike and Suzanne had mentioned, that there probably should be some kind of income standard.
I agree with you three as well. And I think it might be worth noting to the city council, if we have a joint meeting, that, you know, we found as a commission that there can be projects for seniors or those with disabilities that go through this as long as they still meet the affordable housing criteria that we've set, just so that they don't feel that, you know, we're saying no to these types of projects. But at least clarifying that, you know, we're trying to help people with this and help people find affordable housing.
Okay. The third question, should investment of public money be a criterion for a shortened timeframe? And this, so for very low income projects, for example, at a 30% average median income rental project, almost always there's some sort of public money involved. And that can just be the way it is. You could also consider that public money investment a criterion for allowing someone to go through the process. So it's a distinction between a project that's being funded privately and a project that's being funded with public money, whether it makes a difference to you.
I've got an example that I think might clarify my position on this. If there, say, for instance, in the future, a philanthropist were to come through and wanted to develop affordable housing for members in our community, you know, I don't feel that they should be hindered from being able to achieve that or enjoy any fewer of maybe the incentives as, you know, a project with public money. Because at the end of the day, affordable housing is still being created and established for those in Kenmore. So my personal opinion on this one is, I don't believe it should be a criterion for shortened timeframe because the goal that we're looking for and looking at right now is helping to establish affordable housing.
Yep, I agree. I don't think there should be any limitations on individuals or public money. Anyone should be able to be involved in providing the low-income housing.
I don't really see how the funding source is really adds any much value here. Maybe you could have some public money go a little bit further, but I'm not sure that that's really a significant factor here.
I agree.
All right. So we can, our next step, we can do this two ways. I have a recommendation for which way I would suggest we do it. So as you recall, at the very beginning, Commissioner Vanderlin said, well, we could talk about the size of project and that kind of thing. And then I said, well, we're going to set out a framework and then, and then we'll need to answer those questions. What I would recommend is that tonight, we continue with our three scenarios. So we go back to scenario number two and maybe try to answer these questions for scenario number two. And then at your next meeting, hopefully, I'll have a framework. And then we can go back to that very first list of the types of projects and maybe refine that at that point, once we know kind of where we're headed. Because I'm afraid if we start talking about all the different permutations of how the first scenario might work, we won't get through the other two. And so what I'd like to do is to figure out what our frameworks are. And then next time, we'll start to really put some fine points on them. Is that okay with the commission? Or would you rather just sort of slog through the whole list of questions for this scenario?
Any preference? I prefer Lori's approach, but open to others who may think otherwise.
I'm fine.
I think it's a good, yeah, I agree with Lori. Just because if we don't have a framework first, it would be very hard to go through those different layers of consideration. And even when we get to that point, we may have to go back and look at the framework and make some adjustments. But hopefully not.
All right. So shall I turn to scenario two? Ready for that? Okay. So this one I'm calling expedited review request. And this, again, this is one we talked about quite a bit at your last meeting. In this scenario, a developer of any project, including affordable housing units, could propose an expedited review process. So it would be up to the proponent of the project to come to the city and say, I would like to do an expedited review process. Here are my key dates. These are my timeline needs. And then the city either could agree to expedite it if staffing allowed, or the city could offer it to the proponent as long as they were willing to pay for the project or the review of the project. So reactions to this one?
So is this kind of a way to expedite without using city staff? It would be a city-appointed consultant, but it wouldn't take away from the city's staff? And the process would be funded by the potential owner of the project or the developer?
That could be one scenario, yes. So the first, the first choice, the first opportunity would be for the person to go to the city. And then the city could assess, depending on what time of year it is, what the workload is, what the staffing is, whether the city could do it. I mean, that's the first choice, that the city commits to an expedited review process, knowing that there's a desire for more affordable housing in the community. However, if the city, for any number of reasons, and you heard Brian Hampson, the Development Brian Hampson, the Development Services Director, talk about staffing issues and that kind of thing. If the city couldn't do it, this would provide another opportunity to the affordable housing developer to get a faster review if they could afford the pay, payment to a consultant to do the review more quickly.
Lori, just to clarify, the consultant would be under the direction of the city. However, the consultant wouldn't be working for the developer doing the review, right? There would be?
Correct. It would be a city, a city hired reviewer reviewing the project to the city's standards.
Right.
What concerns me on this one is it seems too open ended. I don't really know what the boundaries of this would be. If it was somehow more specific about the, what the options for an expedited process, where would that fit? What type of review would that be? Is it a development agreement as an option? Is it a, you know, a level one? This just seems too open ended to agree to. And I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea that the best funded project goes to the front of the line. So that, those are my thoughts on it.
I, I should clarify one point. This is not changing the process at all. This, the, the permit would go through. Whatever type permit the person needed would be the type permit they would have to go through. It just is a faster way for them potentially to do that. And it gets around that issue that there was the concern about, well, maybe a school project or a park project or some other project that the city is undertaking might be a higher priority. So in that case, the city could say, sorry, we can't expedite this project right now, but you have this other option. And I totally get your concern about the best funded project. That, that would certainly be a concern.
That, that's helpful to me, Lori. If this was limited to public projects, I, I could be more comfortable with this. The language that really kind of stuck out for me is what you've underlined, which is where the developer gets to propose an expedited process. That just seems too open ended. But if you have, it's a public project devoted to a particular public need, but I'm not sure how that relates back to affordable housing. So I'm a little.
Well, it's only on affordable housing projects that they could ask for this, right?
Right. Right, and again, we haven't put those parameters around it, like what level of affordability, how big, et cetera. I, I might, it might help if I explain a process that I was involved in, in the city of Kirkland. It's not quite the same thing, but it's an interesting comparison. So in the city of Kirkland, if someone comes in for, to build a new house, a single family building permit, the person has the option either to get in line at the city and it's first come, first served, that's typically the way it's handled, or they can pay for a consultant. A contract is signed, they understand that the consultant is not working for them. The consultant is working for the city based on the city's standards. All communications about how the project is, whether it meets the standards or not are done with the city. And then the consultant keeps track of the time and then the applicant is billed on an hourly basis for the time spent reviewing that project. So it's, it's like the consultant is a staff adjunct. They're not certainly working for the developer, they're just able to do it more quickly.
As long as we're not waiving any of the other development criteria or zoning, then I guess I'm okay with it. What, what, it sounds like what we're saying is somebody gets to buy their way to the, to the front of the line.
Yeah, you could view it that way.
Yeah, if that's what we're really saying here, and this is a way to augment city staffing, then, you know, I, I think it's okay. I just want to make sure we're not, we're not giving up any of the normal review processes. So it's not an expedition of the process, it's a, it's an ex, we're expediting the, the priority level here.
Right.
Process doesn't change.
Right.
We're just letting these people get in line first or buy their way to the top of the line.
Right.
And it's only if it's an affordable project, affordable housing.
Yes, but I think, you know, it's kind of similar to what we were just talking about. I guess it doesn't really matter where the funding comes from, as long as, you know, affordable housing is still being created at the end of the day. So, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying about how they could buy their way to the front of the line, but I guess at the end of the day, there's still affordable housing being developed at a quicker pace. And I guess it, it shouldn't concern us too much where, or who, who has more funding or that, as long as, you know, there's affordable housing being developed, if that makes sense.
Great.
I agree.
Yeah. Lori, is there, I, one, I guess, I don't know if it's a hesitation. I mean, there's certainly an element of uncertainty here for a developer. I mean, he or she would have to, you know, check with the city and see what the staffing is and probably at the same times or prepare for a consultant. What kind of timeline is there between making a request and getting some kind of answer on, on the city staff availability?
Yeah, well, the, the timeline can be whatever we make it. Typically, a person applying for a permit has an initial few weeks where they, where it's determined whether they have submitted all of their materials or not. And it might be that it would be appropriate during that time period if they were ready to submit to figure out whether it could go to the expedited process or not. Or it could be a discussion at the pre-application meeting, which is a meeting where the person developing the project meets with staff early on. And maybe that's the point at which it's determined.
Right.
Or not, staff availability.
Yeah. I mean, you sort of alluded, could this be structured such that, you know, to, to, you know, if they are going to quote unquote buy their way to a faster process, they, they would have maybe higher affordable housing requirements in terms of like the number of units or types of units, is that to link?
Yeah, that's again, one of those, one of those ideas that we could hang on this approach if, if the commission was interested in that.
Yeah, if you're going to buy your way to something, you ought, you ought to have something. City should get something in return, I guess, if you want to put it in those terms.
Or you can, or you can think of it differently. It could be that it's a nonprofit that is advocating for seniors in a certain income strata. But in order to do this kind of a project, they would have to open it up to anybody in that income strata. But to even get the project off the ground to expedite it, the city would have to view it. And that's part of this scenario is, does it meet the city's criteria and goals? And then if it doesn't totally meet that, they could hire a consultant to move it along in the process, but they wouldn't necessarily have to go to the back of the line. Is that kind of what you're thinking, Lori? The city initially gets to look at the project in that pre-project planning meeting to see if it's something that fits the city's goals. And at that point, they could push it into an expedited review, but they might also be unable to accomplish that unless a consultant comes in. Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I, parts of that I, I think are right on. The part that is probably not quite what I had in mind is that the staff would somehow be determining whether a project was good enough to get the expedited review. I, I would tend to think that it should be a more, at this point in the process, it should be a more objective, we should be setting out what the criteria are to get this kind of expedited request.
So that a develop, so that a developer reading through this would be able to evaluate where their own project?
Eligible, right, right, yeah. And so it sounds a little bit too much like favoritism. If staff is choosing which projects get to be considered and which don't, I'd rather have more objective criteria for that.
So this, it sounds like it's an idea that in order to move that expedited process forward, we would really have to come up with what that criteria is.
Right.
And, and we're not there yet.
No, although, hey, we can go back to our three questions.
Yes.
Maybe move it along a little bit.
Okay.
If you, if the commission is ready. So thinking of this, so we're going to give someone an opportunity to propose that they are going to have the city staff expedite their project. Should this opportunity apply to moderate income housing? Or again, only to low and very low, as you decided with the first process?
I guess from my perspective, I, I would say all of the answers to these questions that I gave for the previous one should stand for this new scenario. So the low to very low and no on the seniors that are not low income and okay on however the money comes in.
Yeah, I don't think I see a difference in my answers either for this one too.
Okay.
I might, I'm thinking a little bit differently about the, for this one specifically for the senior and disability. Knowing that in order to put together a development geared towards seniors and disabled, you have certain ADA requirements, you have other things you're going to build into those apartments that you wouldn't have or those, those living quarters, different from you would have somewhere else. And those often, as I recall, if I'm correct, require a different and more extensive review process and development standards, which slows down the projects and makes them more complicated. So I would say for this one, again, it has to be low or very low income. But I would think that if they were having, and they have to commit to this, that a significant portion of those were going to be available for the disabled and the, and seniors. And they would get to go to the top of the line in order to be able to expedite what would otherwise be a very long and much more likely review process. I'd be in favor of that. That's getting at your criteria.
No, that's good. Any thoughts about that?
I, I guess in general, for any building project, I, are there requirements that all of the units have our ADA or, you know, other kinds of, of amenities that you would classify as needed by seniors or disabled? It seems like most new construction accommodates all of that. But if it doesn't, then potentially there should be a benefit to doing that. But I would, would wonder why the, the development wouldn't include all of those things.
Yeah, I, I would say that probably standard ADA requirements, they are required of all projects. I, I'm thinking though, just thinking about what Commissioner Vanderlin said, that it's possible that a cer, a certain type of project would have additional complexities, maybe that aren't part of the standard ADA format that would make it a more difficult project review. And, and I'm thinking of things like elevators or, or special types of accommodations. I have no idea. This is maybe a case where I could ask Brian Hampson?
Services, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, so, because I don't think we know the answer
Right.
whether there is an additional level of complexity. So we should probably have Brian respond to that.
Yeah, good idea.
Even if there is an additional level of complexity, say, for instance, the city is busy. They've already committed to a project and a project of what we're talking about, this kind of caliber arises. Why should we prevent them from going out if they can? And getting a consultant just to fast track it anyways? If the city's already busy, then they shouldn't, you know, I guess, be hindered from going out and still getting this done, in my opinion.
So, so Nathan, just so I can clarify this, are you agreeing with Mike that if, that having a senior project or a project for those with disabilities should be an additional consideration for this process?
Oh, though, the way I interpreted it was, I, I thought he said that something like this of this nature would, you know, with additional complexities would be moved to the front of the line. But I guess what I'm, I'm saying is, you know, just to clarify that we shouldn't, if, if the city's already busy with something, that they still have the option to go out on their own and get a consultant too. And that shouldn't be limited to bumping out whoever or maybe, you know, getting in front of somebody, but they can still go out on their own if they wanted to and get a consultant.
Just to clarify what my thinking is, which has evolved from our conversation. If, if someone, if a developer came forward with a project that had a significant low income component to it, and that they were proposing that they would add a more sophisticated than what would be the standard ADA or other requirements to facilitate a particularly, something maybe particularly acute disabled folks or for dementia patients who are aged. If they made that, if they specified that that's what they were going to do in their proposal, that they would be eligible to be expedited. And of course, that would be along the lines we talked about before. Has to include a significant, significant amount of low income. And they have to commit to that upfront in some specific way.
All right. So I heard from, I guess I heard from Suzanne and Nathan and Mike. Does anybody else want to weigh in on these questions for the second scenario?
Well, the one question we didn't really get to is, should an investment of public money be a criteria for the shortened timeline? So what do we think about that? Does that bump somebody, if it's a public project? It's hard for me to think about that because this particular scenario already sort of intimates at that. Would, would a public project ever like totally consume a planning and development part of the city? I guess it wouldn't. There would still need to be a timeline for previous projects. But I could see why a public project might want to hire a consultant if the city was unable to accommodate them and just build it into their budget. But should, but should public monies be the criteria? So in other words, let's say, I don't know, King County suddenly is flush with money from something and they see a piece of property in Kenmore that they would like to make a specific development on. Would they automatically be bumped to the front of the line just because it's a public, publicly funded project or partnership between the city and the county or the city and the state? I just don't have enough familiarity with those.
Well, it still, it still has to be an affordable housing project. Well, it still, it still has to be um, an affordable housing project.
True.
So do we care? Do we care where, what's, how it's being funded?
But that's what question C is asking us, should publicly funded projects be expedited in a shorter timeframe?
I'm, I'm just thinking, I, I, there could be a situation where there might be a private, privately funded um, project that, you know, may have less money than a publicly funded project. This may not happen, um, and it may not be likely to happen, but it very well could. Um, so I don't know if we should just assume that all publicly funded projects should be moved to the front of the line because they automatically have less than privately funded. But I, I think, to answer this question, I don't think it should be a criterion because there could be that alternate option there. Um, but I think we should leave it open if they wanted to pursue a private consultant, either if it's with public money or if it's privately funded, they should have that option because in, you know, in the long run, it's fast tracking affordable housing within the city.
All money is green, so. I'm thinking that's not a criteria here. Uh, the criteria is income level, are we going to get a public good out of this, which is a, a, a larger uh, supply of low income housing? Wherever the money.
So really, the question three on this scenario, is it redundant?
I, I think it, it just, uh, we're just hearing from.
In circles.
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think what I'm hearing from several commissioners is that public money doesn't need to be a criterion for getting this expedited process.
It's just based on the low income strata.
That, right, that's the first question, should the shortened timeframes apply? And I think uh, several commissioners suggested only to low and very low income.
Yes, I agree.
Yes.
I'm supportive of where we're heading on this, but I am a little concerned about our choice of languages and we may be not being precise enough. It seems to me that we're not in the second scenario. It is not a bumping to the, the, to the top of the line. It's really, they're paying for a new line. And that's why I'm having a, a little concern about some of the way we're articulating this.
I think if it's being done by city staff, they may be moving up in the line.
Well, I didn't know, go ahead.
If, if it's being done by a consultant, then they're paying for their own process.
And the criteria is low and very low income housing, affordable housing.
Right.
Okay.
The first level here is that they're meeting uh, this public good criteria, which is we're increasing our stock of low income. If at that point, you have somebody who can relieve the city of the cost and of, of, of processing uh, their request, then I think the answer is yes, uh, we would allow that. I don't see there would be harm to the city in that necessarily. It wouldn't have harm to any of the other applicants as well, because the city is still processing there and then actually taking uh, the people who would want to take advantage of this by hiring their own consultant to do this work, it may actually advantage the people who are left in the queue because the city staff would be relieved of that much work and, and would have more time for the other, perhaps less well-funded projects.
Okay, well, are we ready to move to scenario three?
Yep.
Okay, this one again is when there uh, is a waiver requested from development standards. So development standards are things like density and height and setbacks and, um, and that kind of thing. And so if someone wanted to do that, uh, the staff is recommending that we might approach that through the development agreement chapter. Again, this is not an expedited timeline. This is a standard process, there wouldn't be a shorter process. Uh, but it would provide an opportunity that does not currently exist in the city's residential zones uh, for affordable housing projects. And because this is uh, moving an opportunity into the residential zones, staff is recommending that it only be for publicly funded and a hundred percent affordable housing projects. Now, the commission may decide that more flexibility is needed there. But the idea would be that you could do it, request a development agreement, you wouldn't have to go through a threshold determination, the council would automatically review it, and it's done in conjunction with an underlying permit. So you don't, you still have your underlying permit and then this development agreement kind of sits on top of it and allows for a waiver of standards. And then we would reduce, for example, payment of attorney's fees and public notice expenses. We eliminate one hearing for some things currently in a development agreement, you have to have two public hearings. This would reduce that to one public hearing. And again, the affordable housing itself would become a significant component of public benefit. So they would not necessarily have to provide um, a huge additional public benefit to move forward with the request.
Laurie, is this just adding the R1 zone from the, from the pre-meeting to the list of available zoning?
So current, currently none of the, right, none of the R zones are in the development agreement, have a development agreement opportunity. So you can't propose one either in a single family or in a multifamily zone. And I think the reason that staff is cautious and wanting to limit it to an, an affordable housing project is that this would open the door really to any type of a project in a residential zone uh, through the development agreement.
Yep.
And, and so staff was concerned that that might be too broad, which is why uh, these side rails of a hundred percent affordable and publicly funded were put into the recommendation.
Could you give us an example of an area of Kenmore where this potentially could happen?
Uh, with, with. Go ahead.
Um, I'm just thinking, you know, would it be something where you would have a zoned area that allowed for higher density, but it would gobble up a few residential properties around it to create a bigger project, is that kind of what the thinking is?
Well, I, I wasn't thinking of that specifically, I, I was actually really thinking of um, church properties, which are often in residential zones, residential zoning districts, uh, that would be one place. Or um, uh, really in any uh, single family or multifamily zone, this would open consideration of uh, such a project to a waiver of development standards. So again, although there'd be a reduction from two public hearings to one public hearing, in certain cases, only certain standards require two public hearings. Um, so there would be a slight reduction, I suppose, in public hearing opportunities there, but most of our projects have only one public hearing. Uh, it's a decision made by the city council, so it's certainly a decision made by our chief uh, decision makers. And it would restrict the opportunity to do a development agreement to only presumably a, a publicly funded hundred percent affordable housing project.
So it wouldn't allow for a private developer to do something like this? It would only work if it was publicly funded?
As, as staff is recommending, the commission certainly could talk about that.
So just because I'm not familiar with what a publicly funded development, would, would that be like the city of Kenmore taking on a project and developing it? Or what, what else would be considered publicly funded? Would this be like a partnership between the county and the city?
It could be the county and the city, it could actually be a, and, and we would have to flesh this out. It could be a nonprofit that was taking in state money and county money and city money uh, and putting together a project so that, I, I'm not sure it had to be a hundred percent publicly funded, but there had to be public money in the pot.
Okay, that helps.
Uh huh.
You know, that helps, so, so there could be like a non, nonprofit and the county kicks in money or the city somehow kicks in money, but essentially it's not a privately developed hundred percent affordable. You probably wouldn't see that happen anyway. Okay?
Um, if I may, I feel that this is, this is going to be a very tricky thing if, if, you know, we, we pursue this. I've heard actually from a number of residents within the residential area that they would be opposed to this. I don't think it's just um, because of stigma, but I think there might be some other underlying things where if it's just a housing project that no longer, um, you know, follows the guides within zoning, then it kind of changes the entire area of, of the entire neighborhood or region that it's put in. Um, and also I'd like to point out that, you know, even the city staff within these recommendations acknowledges that there would be a headache with this. You know, they're creating it so strict because, yeah, I, I mean, they can see that they're, that the overall, I think, I guess approval from a, a majority of the residential citizens in, in the city would, would be, they, they take this very negatively. And so, I mean, considering the fact that every other zone in the city is already, you know, already has it written in that they can um, allow affordable housing within them, I don't see why it needs to expand to the residential areas. Um, and I just feel like almost it would be opening a can of worms if you did this. I feel like it, it would create a lot of backlash.
One thing, um, just to respond, Nathan, maybe one thing to consider is maybe putting those um, rails on where affordable housing might be allowed in single family neighborhoods. And using the example that Laurie gave is church property, which often have larger pieces of property and oftentimes church, uh, churches look for opportunity, other opportunities, including affordable housing. So that might be one possibility of looking um, at single family zones is it's not maybe opening it up very wide, it's sort of looking at opportunities where it, it might make sense or, or maybe to have more discussion around.
Could, in, in theory, could we define that more closely and say just, you know, religious institutional properties? Um, because Laurie, how she stated it was that, you know, um, churches are in residential property or residentially zoned areas too. Um, and so how, how would we be able to define and put those kind of, those definitions and kind of um, guides in place to just, you know, to make sure that it's clear?
The, um, in the housing strategy plan, uh, there was some discussion about doing something like this. And the way it described the properties were um, properties owned by nonprofit, uh, nonprofit, nonprofit owners, I don't know how to say that. And then it said, you know, comma, including churches, and I suppose if, if there were a nonprofit that owned a piece of property, that might be a consideration.
My concern here is that the concept of publicly funded, you could drive a Mack truck through that. Uh, there's nothing to prevent a nonprofit from buying up property uh, in a single family neighborhood and it's now public, i- and we can now build on it and we can uh, apply to have a, a waiver from development standards. I, I just don't see how you really manage this over time. And as Nathan, and I think some others have referred to, we've already carved out a significant area and it's totally unused frontier uh, that hasn't been utilized, where we've already made economic strategy decisions that that's where we want density and we're having, or struggling to get that density. But I don't understand at this point in time why we would want to uh, move into the residential zones when I'm not sure that we need to, and I'm not sure that we could manage it in a way that would be acceptable uh, to the citizens.
Yeah, I think that's a, that, I, that's a, I think that's a good point. To me, it's, you know, it's not just an affordable housing issue, it's really a density issue in, in single family neighborhoods. And I think, like Mike said, there's, there's a lot of, and others, there's a lot of other places where, where we could, uh, you know, cite this. So I, I would, I would follow that, that line of, of thought that we should really look to, um, you know, circumscribe where, where this development standard would, uh, waiver would, would, would apply. Could be, could be the churches, could be the nonprofits, uh, something along, along with some of, you know, the other multifamily and maybe commercial zones as well, so I would agree with that.
I think you muted.
Is there any potential properties currently that are, have approached the city? Where doing something like this would benefit our city in creating more affordable housing?
Um, there have been, there has been a proposal, I think it's in a multifamily zone. There, it's not being pursued at the moment, uh, but they wanted to do an affordable housing project that didn't meet, couldn't meet the um, affordability level without increasing the density over what the current density was. So the envelope, I don't think the envelope of the project was necessarily any bigger than a project meeting the density would be, but uh, they needed to put more smaller units in the project. And there may have been another development standard, it may have related to parking, I can't quite remember. But, so it was an inquiry on a, on a church-owned property in a multifamily zone, and they had no option but to request a comprehensive plan amendment, which is at least a year-long process to even have a change considered. So the question came up, well, is this the type of project that if it were going before city council, if there were public input, uh, could or should be considered?
It is kind of dicey. But it, it, it's not totally out of the realm of possibility if it has a greater good to it. It's just, I don't like the idea of coming up with a development waiver or expedition of doing this kind of a process for a particular property. It needs to be general enough where it would apply to any other kind of project. And that's the difficulty, is how do we know what the boundaries should be? In, because in the future, it could create problems in the R1 areas. You know, just think of, I mean, yeah.
Well, I, I, the, the only thing I might add is that this is a discretionary process. You understand that if someone applies for it, they don't get it.
Exactly.
Fairly, uh, there is a long public process, it's the city council making the decision. So that's, I suppose, the one uh, defense I can argue um, in assuming that the council would be making the decision that they thought was best for the community.
Just to reiterate what Commissioner Vanderland said, um, he made some really good points and I, you know, I'd like to thank him. Sometimes he, he's on the same kind of mindset as me, but he puts it in more comprehensible terms and really simplifies what I'm trying to get at, even though I don't always get to it. But I, I think he brought up some really good points, that the city has a lot of area already carved out where we want affordable housing to go, where we've put incentives and we put. where we want affordable housing to go, where we've put incentives and we put a lot of work into that already. And there isn't really a need for it to expand into the residential areas, at least not at this time. And so I just don't see a need for that, especially because the city has created a lot of these guidelines and has zoned these places, these zones, the way they are for a reason. And like he was saying, you know, we want to focus on building density in certain regions. And I think we should stick with that plan and kind of maintain that same mindset as a city going through as opposed to, you know, starting to back away from that and jump all jump all over the place. And we should focus on, you know, what we set out to do.
I agree with 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 that assessment as well.
So are we kind of leaning towards this scenario not being something that the commission wants to tackle at this point?
Yes.
For this particular one, if I think a motion would be appropriate. Since this is like a final decision that you don't want me to pursue this.
Yeah, I guess we're open to a motion. If anybody wants to make one.
Make a stab at it. I move that we eliminate this option as being inappropriate at this time. But we would encourage planning commissions of the future or city council to look at this maybe at a different time.
I will second that.
Okay, any any discussion on on the motion? Laurie, can I just clarify that? The under the Development Agreement Chapter, it's theoretically possible. I think there was even some some a point made about affordable housing as as being a possible use there. It doesn't preclude a defallible housing development agreement, not of this particular type, but there could be others that are proposed.
Well, you can always propose a development agreement and affordable housing could be a component. It could be a public benefit offered in any of the city's commercial zones. And I think PSP, there are the zones are listed, but there are no residential zones. Multi family or a single family.
Okay. Okay. Any more discussion on the on the motion? Okay, I guess we're ready for a vote then. More, can you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Olson, her vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Greathouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutzis?
Aye.
Chair Orangeall?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanderland?
Aye.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Mulcair?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, well, those were the items that we wanted to get through this evening. So what I would be doing at the next meeting is coming back with a rough framework sketched out for the two scenarios that we talked about. And then we'll begin to figure out exactly when it should apply, how big the project, what percentage of units as as we move forward.
Great. Okay, so nothing else for us to work on tonight then?
No.
Okay. Anything else anybody wants to bring up for for the good of the order?
I just would like to have a confirmation of that our next planning commission meeting would be October 6. Is that correct?
That is the, I think that's the first Tuesday of the month. I think that's correct, October 6.
Okay.
And I I wanted to give a brief update on the accessory dwelling unit. Yeah.
Thank you.
So last last night, the city council passed the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And there were some changes from your recommendation. For one thing, they limited the number of U's on a property to only one. So in no scenario did they have more than one ADU allowed. They eliminated the parking space. And then they took your three tier approach to sizes for detached ADUs and and broke it into like a two tier thing. I think the threshold is 6,000 square feet. And so below that, it was limited to 600 and above that it was 10% or up to 1,500 square feet. They kept your height recommendation. Oh, and for owner occupancy, they retained the owner occupancy requirement, but for six months only. And then after that, it's extinguished. So Debbie, am I missing anything? Here?
Yeah, that's a that's a good summary.
Was it an unanimous vote, just out of curiosity?
Was it a what?
Unanimous vote by the city council?
Five, two.
Five, two. So we did receive a lot of public feedback. I can't remember, Laurie, but we've probably over 80 comments.
Yeah.
Over eighty eight, eight zero?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyway, completion of that project, so that's.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so are we on a schedule then for October, November, December of two meetings a month? Then are we pretty much back on regular schedule?
Hope so.
Hope so, okay.
Yeah, the the one exception that I can think of is that because of the way the zoning code is set out, there's always a timing issue for your public hearing. So at the point that you settle on your final process recommendations, then we can't hold the hearing at the next meeting because the statutory requirement for notice is not in place. So we have to skip a meeting. That's unfortunate, but that's the way it's either that or I have to notice it before you ever make your recommendation, which I am not comfortable with.
All right, well, thanks for the update on on that, Laurie. Anything else anybody has to share tonight? Looks like there isn't, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Yeah.
Bye.